Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. If you would, join me in prayer. Father, thank you for the stand. Father, we lift up our country in this time of challenges. Father, we pray for all of those that lost their lives last week. And Father, we just pray for your grace, Father. Father, we pray that you would be with us during this meeting, that you would impart your wisdom on us. Father, and keep us ever mindful of why we're here. In Jesus' name we pray. And at this time, Councilmember Gonzalez will lead us into place.
Ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one straight, unbroken, one and indivisible.
You may sit. First, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under other council actions, under bid award, consider award of bid of school zone improvements. Improve housing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for a traffic signal project. What we're doing is, at two of the existing school zones, we're going to be installing signal mastons to get the indications for the reduced speed school zones up over the road for better driver compliance. Another part of this project is, with the new CBS coming to Dixie 8th, we're going to realign that curb to ease that southbound traffic through the curb, and we're going to relocate that signal pole. I had one bidder for the job, Willis Electric out of Abilene, for $72,000. And that was below our estimate of $80,000. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Don't you go anywhere, Hall. Next, consider a bid for the 87th Street improvements.
Yvonne's got to handle that one.
Oh, Yvonne is?
Yes.
That is a trial and error.
This item is to consider award of bid for 87th Street improvements from Yale to East Loop 338. We had two responsive bids for this project, and the lowest responsive bidder was Jones Brothers in the amount of $3,898,854.45. The purpose of this project is to reconstruct approximately 50,000 square yard of roadway with colored crossings in four locations and install approximately 8,000 linear feet of current care. Now, we're engineering, the design consultant and the city staff have reviewed the bid and recommend awarding the contract to Jones Brothers in the amount of $3,898,854.45. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. And motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider award of bid for rehab of the 42-inch sewer line. Yvonne.
This item is to consider award of bid for the rehabilitation of the 42-inch sewer line along Fodery and 24-inch sewer line, aerial crossing masking and row, and appropriation of 2,007 centicade of obligation bond funds for this project. We have three responsive bids for this project, and the lowest bidder was Institute Form Technologies in the amount of $1,483,519. And our estimate for this project was approximately $2,000,000. The purpose of this project is to rehabilitate approximately 2,300 linear feet of 42-inch sewer line in Fodery Road and approximately 470 linear feet of 24-inch aerial sewer line crossing masking and row. The city staff have reviewed the bids and recommend awarding the contract to Institute Form Technologies in the amount of $1,483,519.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Yvonne. Next, we move to public hearings. At this time, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Lacy Apshire Properties. Mr. Brinkley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city rolled out 13 notices related to this case. We had one notice returned. We did not receive any protests. We did receive one written approval. The property involved in this request is located in the southwest corner of the intersection of West County Road and 13th Street. This site is currently vacant, and it is currently zoned two families, one. Land use in the area does consist of church development to the south. We have retail development to the north and the east, and to the west is duplex development. The property owner in this case is Lacy Apshire Properties. They are requesting a zone change to retail, and this would facilitate small retail development on this property. And this would be a good redevelopment of this property for property that's adjacent to West County Road. Proposed zoning for this area is consistent with proposed land uses for property that's adjacent to a major thoroughfare such as West County Road. And this is set forth in our comprehensive plan. And the advocate has indicated that they will incorporate buffering elements such as a solid masonry screen fence and landscaping to minimize any impact on adjacent properties. The zoning, or rezoning that's requested for this site is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood and the city. And the planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval of this request of a rezoning to retail. And the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. And be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Do you know what kind of business it is?
No, sir, not at this time. It's not, there hasn't been anything planned. But, Mr. Governor, it will be a small retail business. There's just not an area there for anything really intensive or massive on that property.
Okay, any more questions?
What's going to happen with the other property, the other two lots that are behind it?
To the west?
Yes.
The west, there's existing duplex development just immediately west of this. That's why there's going to be the solid masonry screen fence over there. And those lots over there are actually owned by the same property owner as this property. So it's all kind of incorporated into, I want to build the situation in there.
Any more questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the microphone for anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Callan Petroleum Operating Owner, Land图Raff Cutcher and Associates. Mr. Brinkley.
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is approximately a 3.73 acre tract that's located in the northeast corner of Section 11, which is actually in the far eastern part of the city of Odessa. This property is currently vacant, and land use in the area does consist of vacant land. The advocate in this case has stated is Callan Petroleum Operating Company. They do own this site. And the purpose of the request of original zoning of future development, real reservation, would facilitate oil and gas well development on this site. Proposed zoning of this property is not contrary to the land uses in this area, and this request is not out of scale with the needs of this area and the city. The planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. And be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the floor for anyone who would like to speak on Agenda Number Five.
Mayor, we're here if you have any questions.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
Next, under ordinance, considering an update to the truck route ordinance, Mr. Feld.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is for an update or revision to our existing truck routes in Odessa. We basically have two types. We have through truck routes and local truck routes. Through truck routes is if a truck does not have a destination in the city of Odessa, they're obligated to use the through truck routes. We also have local truck routes, which if a truck has a delivery inside the city limits, then it should use one of the local truck routes to its destination. The map you see before you is the map of the existing conditions. What we're doing is proposing to eliminate a section of Grant and Andrews Highway downtown and a section of Kermit, basically to address the large truck traffic in the downtown area for congestion reasons, the parking on street, pedestrians. That's what we're trying to address. So this would eliminate those sections of the local truck routes. Everything else would remain the same. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one if you have anything.
Okay, are there any questions?
In conjunction with this, Hall, we're going to re-educate the community about the existing areas also as far as, make sure they understand there.
Yes, through public awareness and also additional signage.
Correct.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Feld.
Thank you.
Michael usually handles. Next, under resolution, consider hotel motel tax funding request. Mr. Feld.
Mayor and Council, I've had two of you request that we put this item back on the agenda for consideration. I would, from staff's perspective, caution you that you awarded dollars to outside agencies at your last meeting, and as a result, would not recommend that you cut any of those allocations. What we're asking you to do, if you do want to cut something, is cut from dollars that you've awarded to city projects and/or increase the amount of the award. You guys discussed this in briefing, and I've kept those numbers on this screen. You're welcome to change them.
Okay, we do have some citizens who would like to speak. First is Sandra Oof.
Thank you for letting me speak, Sandra Oof. And I'm here on behalf of, as a past chamber chair and then also as the owner of the new hotel that will be downtown. I'm asking that CVB be reconsidered, the dollars that are allocated to them. Now, more than ever, we need the downtown, we need downtown revitalized. We need someone to be our champion downtown. We have downtown Odessa, but we also need CVB. For every dollar, I went to Luanne Lambert and asked her, for every dollar that we spent, that was spent, or given to the chamber and was spent, the city received $55 back. So with that, over $5,000, over $5,500 in return, I mean, that's a phenomenal investment in the city of Odessa. So on behalf of the hotel that's coming and on behalf of all of the hotels and motels that are here, I would ask that you reconsider that. I agree, I'm not asking that anyone else be cut, but if there's money there in the reserve that you could look at maybe giving CVB again. They are working right now for three, four, or five years from now. So if you have any questions, that was just my, the main point that I wanted to make was investment.
No, it's okay.
Thank you, Sandra. Next is David Bhutan.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to check up here the allocation of the original bid, if you want to see those.
Thank you very much. We'll take up much of your time. I would like to point out that CVB is more responsible for the hotel motel tax revenues than probably any other award that you make. And I think it should be noted that now is the time, more than ever, that CVB be funded fully because we've got vacancy rates in hotels that we didn't have a couple of years ago. And so if we're going to, if we're going to fund and put forth the effort to recruit people to come to our community and stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, purchase gasoline and other retail items here, now is the time, more than ever, to do that. You may not provide as much of those funds to the reserve as you would in good years, but that's probably the way it needs to work. There's probably an inverse relationship so that when things are really good here, you know, we can, we can put more money to the reserve. So I would just like to say that now is the time, more than ever, during the slow economic times, to fund CVB to its fullest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bhutan. Next is someone who doesn't want to speak, but this is in support of the agenda. It's Bernie Spears. So should we do some speaking? Okay, right on the line, so come on up, Bernie.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, councilmembers, Mr. Martin, I'm here in support of CVB. One of the things that we do with the housing authorities is that we bring conventions to this area. And if you look back over the past years when Pat was there and Linda and Molly and Sheila, they were there whenever we needed them. We went to various communities. And we are instrumental in bringing housing or bringing people here to this area. So I'm in support of, I don't know, what you're going to cut. Everybody deserves money, but surely there are some monies that can be used to fund CVB to its fullest because we will be calling on them. When we're out and about with the housing authority, we go to other communities, and I much rather spend the money here because we go to those other communities. We're spending $200 and $300 a night for rooms. If we can bring those same individuals here, we have 500 to 700 participants in our convention. So I'm here again to support CVB. Anything you can do will be helpful to not only us but the citizens in Odessa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next is Renee Earls. Ask to speak.
Good evening. As the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you for reconsidering allocation for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Their job is to bring people into our community and show them the fine activities that we have. Our contribution last year alone for that department was over $54 million impact on this community. That's through hotel motel. When the people come, they get gas. They go to restaurants, they go shopping. So it really does make an impact, and we just appreciate the opportunity for you to reconsider that. We did submit a budget for $1,026,000. That's what we feel like it will take for us to fund our program and to get the best results. We'll obviously work with what we have, but we feel like that the investment that we bring back to the city certainly warrants that. So thank you again for your consideration.
Last speaker is Luanne Lambert.
Good evening, Mayor, council, others. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you this evening. And again, I would like to mimic Bernie and say thank you so much for putting us back on the agenda and having an opportunity to speak with you. Again, mimicking Renee, to be fully funded just helps us do what we do. 365 days a year, that's what we do, is try to bring people to Odessa. We sell our community. We do it with professionalism, and we do it with pride. We love our community. And we work very hard to bring the groups in. It's not always easy. When you're looking at groups sizes of 575, like Ms. Spears suggested, it is hard to bring them here, but it is fun. And it is what we do, and it is what creates that money that we in return put back into the CVB and our other venues as was spelled out. Looking, you all received a packet, councilmembers. You received a packet this week with some information and some statistics. Looking at last year alone, there were 67,707 people that attended conventions and meetings and sports events in Odessa. We were responsible for 50,472 of those, or nights. That's pretty amazing when you think about it. And when you look at a $55 million estimated economic impact back to you, that's about $55 per dollar that you give us. That's quite a return on investment. And just like to ask for your support and help us bring people to Odessa. Do you have any questions for me? I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Okay, thanks to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the floor for discussion.
If I might discuss, may I, Larry, you know, I cannot.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
I can so discuss. I think there's some important things that need to be brought up. I'd like to echo what Mr. Bhutan said, that the economics today allow the opportunity to book the rooms, that the prices of the rooms accompany to a price range where it can be acceptable. And Luanne can absolutely have a little bit more of an open door to go get additional, additional conventions, whatever, I think. I'd also like to point out the fact that the economic impact, as was mentioned, of over 60 million, that's huge. It's a huge part of Odessa. It's a huge part that we get for Odessa. You know, in all consciousness, I'd love to be able to get exactly what you're asking for. You know, I think there's some things that unfortunately that we may have to look at a little bit of a drop in. But the suggestion I would have would be to look at some other fellow organizations within the community that deal with the city of Odessa. Glory of Downtown Odessa, Inc., I'd really like for us to see if we can push the three requests that we had had for additional things next year to the following year where we could look at the $10,000 for Firecracker Fan Day Go, the $50,000 for the Pub Beer Festival, and then the $3,900 for the other association with the monthly night out in Odessa. If we could push that to next year, I think that's extremely important. I'd also think that if we could look at the Rat Le France, we have 43,000 rounds there. We can't put any more people on that golf course. And so advertising's not doing us any good. I think there are some very important things associated with the Rat Le France that we'd like to keep, and there's certain advertisements. And of course, there, I'd like to see if we could drop that from our 65 that we gave to 35. The other thing that I think is extremely important, and probably the most important part of the whole thing, is the fact that we are engaging to build a huge convention center in hotel in downtown Odessa. There is no better time to start booking rooms. Once we do know when that date's going to be, then right now. We can book two to three years in the future. And then all that does is guarantee us that we have a great investment and a means to take care of it. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, entertain a motion. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second.
Just for clarification, you're, you're,
Yes, that's what I was wondering about.
You're moving to accept the numbers that you discussed in briefing as put out here on the screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And our second, that's, okay. We have a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to appointment of boards and officers. Mr. Ramallo.
We don't, we don't have any.
Okay. Next, consider hotel convention center master development agreement. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend that we go on a productive session to discuss the MDA.
So moved. Do we want, go ahead and let the citizens go ahead and speak so they can go ahead and?
I would suggest that.
Sure, okay. So we will go ahead and open up the floor for the ones who have given us cards. First is Alejandro Barrientos. Wants to speak on local food truck ordinance. Come on.
Hello, good evening. First off, I want to say thank you for letting me come up here and speak to you. I've been working with Michael and Vanessa, attorney's assistants. They've been most helpful. But at the end of the day, nothing has been changed so far with the city of Odessa, the new food truck ordinance. Today, I was given a notice violation for my food truck for parking in on my own property overnight. I'm parking on my property, it's owned by commercial. I have security cameras and alarm system. It's all gated up. It's a full-blown commissary kitchen. I had a petition over, oh, close to 1,000 signatures, which I turned in today. I got a letter from the Health Department showing that my commissary kitchen that's located 1,005 Moats Grand is, meets all standards and safety requirements for a kitchen, a commissary kitchen. I have city of Odessa water, city of Odessa trash. I have full for oil, for waste oil. I have a contractor valley protein for waste oil. It's full regulations. Up to three weeks ago, I was in full regulations at the ordinance. I was in compliance with everything. I was not, I was not against the law. As of three weeks ago, I am now against the law. You know, I got a notice violation for me moving my food truck. I request to get a meeting and see what we could sit down and either be grandfathered in from the last ordinances that we were in or put the old ordinances in place. It directly affects me, my family. I'm spending more time and thinking about if I'll be able to open up tomorrow instead of how I better serve my community and my customers.
Since it's an non-agenda item, we can't speak.
Yes, sir.
As it has to be, but I just wanted to clear that up. Just let you know.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Barrientos. Did you want to speak, or it said you designated yours? We'll go either way. Okay.
Good evening, y'all. I just want to let y'all know that the food truck is our life. It's our livelihood. And we're not messing with anyone. We're in compliance with everything. No negative has been done. We've been there, finding daddy over here, and then this guy just comes in. So I'll just ask for another consideration of the ordinance.
Thank you. Next is Jori Barrientos.
Hello, it's Josie, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Anyway, I'm just here to ask y'all to reconsider the new ordinance on the food truck. They've been there over a year. There's no, there's, that had affected anyone in a negative way. And if anything, they help the community. They feed the homeless. They help the less fortunate. They help the kids, you know? So I'm just here to support them.
Okay, thank you. Next is Gabriel Lopez. Wants to speak on saving our duck society.
Mayor and Council, I thank you. My name is Gabriel Lopez. I'm here as the acting president of the Save Our Ducks Society, a group recently formed dedicated to the relocation rather than euthanization of the ducks currently located in Memorial Gardens Park in Odessa, Texas. First and foremost, we would like to extend our apologies to the offices of Steve Patton and Michael Bodencheck. We remain aware that some individuals associated with our cause contacted their offices in a hostile and negative manner. At no point did our group encourage, condone, or advocate such behavior. Our group started through a social media post and continued growing, encompassing a diverse population of local residents, diverse population of local residents, and has since reached thousands between two online petitions. We have received ridicule from many that this issue is not important enough to waste time on when there are many other pressing issues plaguing our nation. We argue that the little issues are important, as the little things ultimately define the integrity and character of our city. While we realize euthanization may have been the easiest way to deal with the issue at hand, we urge our city council to be better than this. Despite the ridicule, one of the most rewarding aspects of this process has been seeing the inspiration of the youth who have rallied to our cause. The youth seem unable to fathom why the water fowl cannot be relocated. We must not teach our children that the easiest solution is the best solution. I ask you to picture your children's and grandchildren's faces when telling them, when telling them that these animals had to be killed because it was too hard and too much effort to do otherwise. Through our discussions with city and state officials, we have been told that a moratorium has been issued on euthanization until the city and state can discuss further. We thank you for this. We have been informed by both parties that the decision for relocation lies with the other, and if that one agrees to relocation, the other one will as well. It is with this in mind, we urge the city council to pledge tonight to allow the ducks and geese to be relocated to one of the many suitable locations that have volunteered to take the water fowl. Thank you for your time and consideration, the Save Our Ducks Society.
Thank you. And we can't speak because it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to let you know that. Okay, that is all of those who have asked to speak, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to go on to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Go ahead and call a meeting back to order. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, moving to consider hotel convention center master development agreement. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We've already had citizens' comments on non-agenda items, so we are adjourned.